Okay, we're at 7:30.
Hi, everyone.
All right, is that time?
Yep.
All right, 7:30 in Roxbury, Connecticut on February 14th, Valentine's Day. I'd like to call the Roxbury zoning commission meeting to order. And before we seat members, I just want to say seriously, you might think I'm joking, but Jim is not with us tonight. I don't mean, I didn't mean it to sound that way. Jim is not going to be here tonight. And this is, if I'm not mistaken, the first meeting he's missed in 23 years.
It's amazing.
That's incredible.
You know, and he's doing something personal tonight. You know, and he's not sick or anything like that. And he called and apologized and he was going to make it. And, you know, he leaves some pretty big shoes to fill.
That's changing the rest of us.
When we get to real meetings, sometimes I'm going to have to get a pillow in my chair to sit as tall as Jim's at. So, anyway, let's see our, let's see our members. Tonight, our regular members tonight, we have Kim Tester, Elaine Curley, Ellen Johnson, myself, Bill Hurd. And that's, oh, so we don't have Jim. So we need to, we have three alternates here, Cheryl Rosen, Candy Valeri, and Chris Hagerty. So for Jim Conway, we will see Karen, I think you said it was Candy, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So for Jim Conway, we will see Candy Valeri. And the first item on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on January 10th. So, does everyone have a chance to look them over?
Yes.
Yes. Any changes, anyone finds glaring?
I didn't see anything. It's Kim.
Neither.
Okay, this is Bill. I saw something on the first page, section seven site plan. We continued it to be discussed later. But the second sentence, or the first sentence, second, no, second sentence, said it was noted, this is something I said, it was noted that site plans were not required for any permitted use, but only special permits. And what I think that's what we changed it to, it should have been that site plans were required for any permitted use or special permits. That's the original, that's the original statement in that sentence that we changed. And we were going to change it to eliminate and all zoning permits and just have special permits stand alone. Is that how you remember that?
Yeah, I remember that. It's changed since then, but for that night, I think we were going to just leave it as special permit.
Well, we can leave it that way because we've continued it to be discussed further, we will. So would that suffice to let us approve those minutes?
Yeah, I think it's okay to leave it as it is.
So we'll leave it. Anything else?
No, didn't see anything.
This is Karen. Candy found a typo on page two near the bottom. It's the, let's see, fourth sentence from the end of the last big paragraph on that page. We need to insert the word B.
Zone B.
The word B, B E. Kim Tester agreed that this method would be easier if changes need to be made to, need to be made to the zone. So she caught that.
Oh, okay, great.
I'll put that in.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Candy.
Yep. Hi, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm having a problem with my computer and my speaker, so I called in and I can see y'all.
Okay.
Hi. Hi.
We can hear you.
Who is this, Candy?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's Candy. I'm having all sorts of problems with my computer.
Oh, we can hear you.
Good. Well, I'm going to mute myself until I have to speak.
Candy, do you know you were seated?
Oh, no, I didn't.
Okay, you probably came in after that. Yeah, Bill seated you for tonight. Is that going to be a problem, you think?
No, it shouldn't be. I mean, you won't be able to see the faces I'm making, but that should be okay, right?
That's more than fine.
No, no, that's fine. I have no problem with that. Sorry about all these issues I'm having here.
No problem.
It's good to feel good that someone else has problems with computers. Thanks, Candy.
Hey.
I had my share all day today.
Any other corrections to the last month's minutes? No?
No.
Oh, I'll entertain a motion to approve last month's minutes.
This is Kim. I motioned to approve the minutes of January 10th with the one addition, the typo change, the addition of the word B.
All right, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Ellen, seconds. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention.
Elaine.
Elaine, all right, so the minutes are approved for January 10th, 2021. Public comment, any public comment? None that I know of.
No, it would have come in through Karen.
All right, Karen, there's no public comment?
We received no public comment this month. Thanks.
Okay. Now, before we go into the next agenda item, I want to, Kim is going to step in for me because consistent with Connecticut statute section eight dash 11, I'm recusing myself from matters and application of the woods based on a conflict of interest relating to prior business I've had, prior business relationships with the applicant owners. I will therefore turn the meeting over to Kim Tester for the special exception agenda item for the woods and do the same for all future matters related to that application. Kim, I turn the meeting over to you and I'm stepping out of the meeting and I will mute myself. So nod when you're done, if I don't see that, let me know when to come back.
All right, well, you'll hear me, so that's okay.
All right, I'll say, okay.
Yes, right, right. Okay, thank you. Kim Tester, vice chair. So I'm going to seat, so Bill, we unseated, and I'm going to seat Cheryl for Bill, Cheryl Rosen. Okay, for this. And so our next agenda item is an application by the Woods Roxbury LLC for a special permit to create an interior lot. And we have the application before us and we have received another email with the maps. And just so that everyone is aware that there'll be no discussion on this application this evening, this is a meeting where we will be receiving the application. And the clock begins tonight with that receipt. We will have time during the public hearing, which we will schedule this, scheduled for hopefully next month so that we can discuss it and then the public will have a chance to comment as well. The, in the past, what we have done is made a motion to accept an application like this, but no motion is needed in conversation with our town attorney. When an application is handed in, the next scheduled meeting of the commission is the official date of receipt of the application. And that's when the clock begins. So it is, just for the record, Connecticut general statute section eight dash seven D is the statute regulating receipt of applications. And the receipt date again is the date when the clock starts, which is tonight. And so as of this evening, February 14th, the application is received by this commission. Just so also, so that people are aware, during this past month, our zoning regulations were updated and renumbered and there was a problem with that, especially in, revolved around a section pertaining to this application. And I want people just to be aware, it was 18.9. The title of it is called Required Hearings. And that's a place where the applicant can go and get the information they need on how to proceed to prepare for the public hearing, et cetera. And so that was renumbered. And then we had Jimmy put it back the way it was. So it is now still 18.9, but for a couple of weeks, it was a different number. So I'm just letting you know that if anyone needs to find it, it is back in its original location as 18.9, again titled Required Hearings, just so that there isn't any confusion on that. Does anybody have any questions? It's pretty straightforward. Okay. So we will then schedule a public hearing. So Karen, can we do that for next month, March?
We should be able to do that for next month, yes.
Okay, that would be great.
And the, the, the regular meeting date is March 14th.
Yeah, okay, good. So March 14th, we will have the public hearing at 7:00. Well, I think there'll be another public hearing before that one, but that'll be the evening of the 14th. And the applicant should make sure that they have done a mailing to neighbors that includes people across the street and just provide proof of, that they have, they have done that. Okay. All right, I think, I think we are.
Excuse me, Kim? So the, the rule about adjacent neighbors, all of that remains the same as well?
Everything remains the same. Yes, correct. Yep, you're welcome. Okay, so I think at this time, I think we are going to reseat Bill. And thank you, Cheryl, for taking his spot. And Bill will then rejoin the meeting.
All right, I'm back. Thank you, Kim. The next item on the agenda is, it doesn't seem like much and it isn't really much, but it's something we can do tonight. It's called Discussion of Public Act 2129, House Bill 6017 regarding parking requirements and opting out procedures. Options that we have. And this pertains to, as I said, it pertains to Public Act 2129, right, and 6017 House, House Bill. And under the act, zoning regulations cannot prohibit, cannot do many things. If you have the, the paragraph in front of you, you can see that number five, under things that zoning regulations cannot do, it's require, can you see that, number five? Julie, can you scroll down to five? I think it's the beginning of the next page. Go back to the top.
Oh, this is the one that, I don't know if this is the same one that you're looking at, Bill?
No, it's not.
Yeah, this is one for me, Julia. This is not, I don't think this is the one he's looking at, that he wants.
We need the one that pertains to, well, it's the same 2129, but it's a page, it'll be page three of what Gail sent to us.
Okay, so maybe this is, maybe we'll just.
No, I think, I think, Bill, I think it's a, you're looking at something that's entitled Agenda Item Number Six.
Yeah.
That actually came from Karen. That didn't come from Gail, I believe. I think it was an attachment to one of the emails from Karen.
I can pull up that format if he'd like.
Yeah, that's what he's looking at. And then there's a five that has a circle on it.
Yeah, there's a, yeah, that's right.
Right?
Why the circle on it? Yep. And it's just a simple paragraph, require more than one parking space. That's the opening of the sentence.
Yeah, I think it's like the four, yeah. It's past that, yeah. It's past the application. Require is number nine.
Keep going.
Let's pass that.
Going down.
Yep.
There it is. There it is back up. Perfect.
Okay, there it is. Number five, up to top, require more than one parking space for each studio or one bedroom unit or more. The two parking spaces reached dwelling unit with two or more bedrooms, unless the town opts out of the same procedure as the ADU opt out above. And that, the ADU, of course, is accessory dwelling units. That's what that stands for. So this is very minor, I think, but we still should, since we can opt out so very easily tonight, I think we should do that. Does anyone have any objection to us opting out? And if, if you don't, the next page tells us how we opt out. Can you get that next, there it is. To opt out, we have to have a two thirds, two thirds vote of the commission to initiate the opt out process, hold a public hearing. The zoning commission decides to opt out within 65 days as to the close of the hearing and stating on the record for the reasons for the decision. Possible two thirds vote is required to approve. I don't quite understand what that means.
That was Gail's notes, but, you know, I don't, I think that won't be a problem.
Okay, publish notice of decision, so we can vote on it because it has to be ratified by a two thirds vote of the town legislative body, the select people. So, but we can do all we have to do and it goes to them. So we don't have to have it approved by them for us to vote on it. So if you think we should opt out, just to clean house or get one thing out of the way, we can, should, should we, do you think we should opt out? We can, should we have a vote on that right now?
Well, if I could, I just want to make sure everybody understands. So our zoning regulations currently allow two parking spaces per, where the state is saying that they want to just make it one. And because, but that's, that's really done thinking about a larger municipality with less space. And when you have a one bedroom unit, often there are two people in it and they need, each need a parking space. So I think it's in Roxbury's best interest to opt out of that so that we can maintain and keep our two parking space number. And it's opting out the way we did, Elaine, if you remember that, with the granny pods, you know?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. It's preemptive, yep.
Yep. And the nice thing is that a lot of these things, you know, we're ahead of the game with the state anyway. So this was really the only thing that we had to, had to work on, which was nice. I hope that was helpful.
It was. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, very helpful.
All right, thank you, Kim. Any more discussion needed on this? So we'll entertain a motion to opt out.
If anyone do that?
My name is Elaine and I will move to opt out of this item agenda number six.
I would state what it is, just the.
Opt out of the act.
The parking.
It would be opting out of the following process. Or you want me to name it?
Yeah, opting out of the parking space requirement as dictated by the state.
Yeah, that sounds good.
That sounds good, Candy. So I I will make a motion to opt out of the parking space requirement by the state.
Okay, this is Candy Valeri.
Do I have a second?
I second it, Candy Valeri.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's 100% vote?
Yep.
So now that, let's schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, so I was going to suggest scheduling the public hearing for the same night, in March 14th, and have that go first because it'll take like two seconds.
That's a good idea.
You know? That has a deadline on it and we're better off getting it out of the way.
So Karen, you will.
Kim, does that need a motion for the public hearing or no?
Oh.
Public hearing?
I don't, um.
Or just the consensus or what, or a vote or what?
No, I believe we have to take it to vote.
Okay.
Well, let's do that then, so we'll.
Yep, so this is Kim.
We could err on the side of caution and just do the vote and then if it's not necessary.
Yeah.
No harm done.
Okay. All right, this is Kim. I motioned to, to propose a public hearing or hold a public hearing.
Schedule.
Schedule, to schedule a public hearing for the, to opt out of the required parking through this, from the state of Connecticut. How's that sound? For March 14th?
That's good.
Okay.
This is Elaine. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, is that unanimous? I couldn't hear everybody.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So now we turn that over to Karen to do the application for the public hearing and create the public hearing criteria. Is that correct, Karen?
Well, I have one more question that we have to get answered and that is whether, does the planning commission need a referral on this as they do with all our zoning changes? Or is this a separate case? I think I need to ask Gail that question.
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
Well, it doesn't specify that. It only specifies it goes to the Board of Selectmen.
It does. So it, it may not. It may be a special case. And in any case, it won't affect our public hearing date. It's just a question I'll get answered.
Okay, yeah, I don't know the answer. Good question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So Julie, that stuff that you put up for me earlier, that will go, that would go up next.
But before we put that up, before we discuss that.
Okay.
I want to say that there's potential for about a year from now to audit our regulations and, and possibly a spot in the budget to do this. But that means for the next year, we will have regulations that aren't audited. Our regulations are, they could be, they could be out of date, they could be out of compliance, they might be inconsistent. So if we didn't have an audit until next year, we'd be operating with regulations that we don't know are totally consistent and compliant. So it's been suggested by a number of people that we do our own little audit in the meantime, because if we don't,
I can bite you.
What's that?
I come back and bite you.
Yeah, so if we do our own personal audit, we may find some things that we can catch. It's not going to be a legal audit, but I was talking about this to Candy the other day. And she generously volunteered to go through all the regulations and do our own little personal audit. And I told her that I would step in and do it with her. So I think that we can, you know, we can look at the, the regs and if we, if we don't define some things, if we don't look over our rigs and they're outdated, we don't do justice to our jurisdiction. So I think it's an attempt that we can do to, you know, take care of some problems we might run across before. And if we need a professional audit a year from now. So I just wanted to let you know that Candy volunteered for that. I'll help her if she needs help. And before we get into legislative business that Kim has to, I just want all of you to know that. So the next item on the agenda is.
Well, can I, may, I want to say something, so if I may, just about that. Thank you, Candy. And those of you who remember Stuart Kellerman, he spent a lot, right? He spent, he kind of did that job. He was in here for a long time and he and Jim worked through rewriting a lot of the regulations. It's over the, you know, when was he on? Has he been off? I don't know. He's been off for about.
Four years.
Four, six, five, six years. I think it's been quite a while. So it's the way it's done, you know, it's great to have someone step up and do that. And I, I enjoyed those that I did as well. You learn a lot, you know?
You still up for it, Candy?
Sure.
Okay.
You know, you do it in pieces. You do it in pieces. So, but thank you. I just wanted to say that, so.
So, all right, well, let's go on to the next agenda item.
So is the, do we have to make that official or it's an internal housekeeping issue?
That's just out of me, two people on the commission having out of meeting get togethers to look over the regulations.
Okay.
So before, Bill, before you do character, can I do the other two? I'm going to do two things before then and then it'll slide into character. Is that okay?
The legislation thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to introduce you because
Okay.
I just want to let everyone know that together and individually in the past couple of weeks, I know Kim, John Cody and I have received from Gail McTaggart and the state, a great, great deal of correspondence and information. Too much for me or too much to seem for anyone that organized in such a short time for irrational briefing to the commission. So Kim and I were talking that we took so many notes that I ran out of places to write notes on. But because Kim took notes a little bit better than I did, legislative process now, and I'm going to say, listen. Go for it, Kim.
Thank you. You're funny. Okay, so, so Julie, so that first one, those provisions that you had up before, I'll take that when you're ready. Okay.
Is that the right one?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, so.
enlarged any or no?
What's that?
Can that be enlarged at all or is that as big as it gets? Like the big square up there next to the X?
Oh, and FYI, so just so you know, I'm not going through every one of these things.
Okay.
All right, just, just so you, just so you know. And I believe Karen sent this. There were like four attachments, so you each got all of these. It was an email that Gail, our town attorney, sent and I divided it up into separate documents so you could find it more easily. So this is a list, if you could scroll to the top of it, Julie, just at the beginning. Yeah, oh, okay, great, there you go. These are, this is in the legislative session, January through June 2021. I had Elaine, Bill and I went to a meeting at the Northwest Hills Cog Council of Governments in July and they gave us an overview, a lot of what had happened. And so a town attorney put together a list of all the things that came out of that. And a lot of this is not anything that we have to really deal with in Roxbury and some things are. But I wanted, I thought it was important, and she did too, that you have it all in one document so that you had a better idea of what took place in this public act. in one document so that you had a better idea of what took place in this Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine. And these happen to be prohibitions for zoning regulations, meaning, um, eh, you cannot, you know, prohibit the use of, this is like number two, receptacles for storage, you cannot prohibit or impose conditions on manufacturing homes, th- there's a lot of very long list of things, but this is something for you to kind of take a look at, and, um, if you kind of scroll up now, just for the next page. Uh, listed in this is, uh, yep, thank you, listed in this document is what we just agreed to do with the parking space, so parking spaces are listed in here. If we get to right where this yellow is, um, we have to, um, indicate and outline, define what character means, and that's what Bill's going to go over after I'm done. There's also, uh, it's talked about in here about accessory apartments, which we have already taken care of, because we allow more than the state requires. And so there are quite a few other things, again, a lot that Roxbury doesn't have to deal with, because many of these items are for larger municipalities. But just something for you to understand what's taking place, so. I think I'm ready for the next document, which kind of peels off, yes.
Kim, I'm, oh, sorry, it's Candy, uh, before we go any further, if, if you all have not read this, um, number three on the first page is the same one as number three on the very last page. Except the number three on the first page is missing the C like Charlie, whereas the number three on the last page includes the C like Charlie from the act.
Yep. Well, so this, this is, um, these are notes sent to us by the town attorney, so.
Right, right.
Yep, and so, um, it's kind of, um.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out, the three is repeated, so, you know. You don't have to read them both, I guess, is what I'm saying, the first one, uh, is lacking the last part. So if we just delete that, and just read the one that's on the very last page before the, uh, the section twenty-one dash sixty-four definitions. They're identical.
Oh, I see, number three, so that's, and that's the one that's complete.
That's complete, the one on the very first page.
Yeah.
Where she lists prohibitions, that one is incomplete.
Oh, gotcha, I see it.
Yeah, okay. You don't have to.
Yep, so what I'll do is I'll take that one and move it to three.
Yeah, we can delete that first one.
Yep, okay, very good, thank you so much. Okay, Julie, if we can have the one on, uh, section one. The document that says section one. So section one in our regulations, and this is what Bill and I learned when our meeting with her a couple of weeks ago with the town attorney. Section one in zoning regulations outlines, um, what zoning regulations are to do, are to be, and it's, we don't really have a choice of what goes in here, this is something that comes from the state, it's what the state defines zoning regulations to be, and so that's where ours begin with this, and there were quite a few changes, some listed in the, um, document that was just up, and some totally separate, but this is, um, if you can go to the, just to the top of that page, at the beginning of it, no, no, the other way. The, yeah, thank you, so again, this is Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine, but it's the, um, section eight dash two, which, again, section one always relates back to eight point, eight dash two regardless of when, but these, um, changes will update that section, and we asked her to do that for this because it's more of a legal change than anything else, and she was going to be the one to know what to do there. Um, instead of us going through that, so I just wanted you to be aware, and there, you know, we should, you should read through it when you have a chance to go through, because there are quite a few additions and alterations there. And it does, um, bring up the, um, the term of character within it, and then this was going to lead me to pass this back to Bill to talk about that section, uh, or that term, and, uh, Gail giving us a, a few suggestions on how to define character.
Character, as I looked through the regulations, appear dozens of times, maybe not dozens, but many, many, many times. Character, and now that you'll see on Agenda Seven on the packet that Karen sent you, um, which pertains to twenty-one dash twenty-nine, House Bill sixty-one oh seven, uh, it, in the first paragraph, um, oh, that's the opt-out thing, we have, oh, there it is.
There you go.
Yep, there, stop right there, oh.
Too far.
Alright, uh, this act enabling eight point two, so, we'll just read it to get, to get a, something to kickstart our discussion, uh.
Actually, this one is, oh yeah, I see, okay, yeah.
Okay, alright, so the act advises several goals of the zoning enabling act to address significant disparities in housing needs and access to educational occupational opportunities, furthering the purpose of the Federal Fair Housing Act. This act removes the requirement that zoning regulations prevent overcrowding of land and avoid undue concentration of population. Well, the entire time we've had zoning regulations, this seems to be a basic premise of zoning. But now this act removes that requirement and, uh, and replaces subjective considerations of character with objective considerations of physical site characteristics of zoning district and particular suitability. If this wasn't serious, it'd be humorous, uh, because we have to start picking apart, reinventing a wheel uh, that made up of the word character, we can't use character, but we can use characteristics. So, and then it asks us to efficient, to now enforce, is to promote official, efficient review of land use applications. This seems to be quite complicated, and, uh, Gail gave us some, uh, guidelines to help us de, well, she sent us today, you, you all got that thing that Karen sent us this afternoon, correct?
So Julie, so the next thing would be the, the document that says character.
Yeah, well, let's, let's do the first, it says Public Act twenty-one twenty-nine. Zoning Enabling Act eight point two, the public act is in big black print on the top, can you see that Julie?
Okay, do you want me to switch documents? Or, or stay here, okay, hold on.
Okay, that's, that's not the one I wanted, but I will read this other.
With this, this is the character one.
Yeah, I have a separate page that has just, uh, guidelines for definition, but I'll, it's only two sentences and I'll read that. Then we'll go, we'll, we'll use this one next, so keep this up.
Okay.
Guidelines for character, the definition of the term character, shall be expressly articulated by clear and explicit standards with reasonable consideration given to physical site characteristics to ensure regulations are not used against people but used for the better delineation of the physical nature of places. So, now we can go to this. It's on the screen right now, and I've not read this through, because I just got it, so this is also applying to character, and these are, uh, I guess, have all of you read this one page? Or can we read through it? Can you scroll up a little bit, um? Julie, just to see. Uh, that's up or down, well, I guess if I scroll, you know, farther and down to the next page.
And that's the end of it.
The last paragraph. The character proposed use as defined by physical features. This is telling us what we need to use to define the word character. I don't think that we can tonight, we, if we could, it'd be great, but I don't think, we, we need to discuss how we go about defining character. And how we basically, they're asking us to reinvent the wheel. And, uh, what do you, does anyone have any proposals on where we can start? If, if not, Candy and I can certainly work on it, but it would be nice to have character defined and specific, it's sprinkled throughout our regulations, so if we define the word character and put it in our definitions, then we could only change the definition and we don't have to change all the regulations.
Exactly, that's correct, that's what she's recommending, Gail, yeah.
Yeah, Bill, I, I think Gail's February eleventh memo, um, concerning definition of character to provide with mandate of Public Act number twenty-one dash twenty-nine. She does recommend adding a definition of character, that's rather good, to our section.
I agree.
Julie, can you, um, move, uh, go back a page, go back to.
Go back.
Or it says add new definition to section twenty definitions.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That is a, that's a very good definition, and.
I agree.
Yeah, if we can insert that language, that should take care of any mention of character throughout our regulations.
Yep.
It's very thorough, very detailed.
Yeah. I think Gail has done this for us.
Yes.
Excellent.
Yeah.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. I'm just reading through it again, so I, you know, so any, any, um, just so people are aware too, but any changes that we make will have to go to public hearing. So even when she finishes section one, it still has to go to the public hearing, and so what we've done in the past is things that are less complicated. You know, so it might be some handful of definitions, you know, we kind of put in, we probably put some things together, we'll have to list something separate. But there might be a night where we have two or three, you know, public hearings, um, that we can then um, kind of group them, so we can have the, kind of discuss these and make decisions and then keep them off to the side, and then when we're ready, we can, we can schedule to have.
Kim, this is Bill.
Yeah.
If Candy and I discover a dozen things that we can reasonably change, safely change, and also have character, any with, if Candy and I come up with recommendations, things that are obviously inconsistent or things that need to be updated, we can put those into a public, we can put those into a change in the regulations and have multiple changes. And can we have a public hearing on those multiple changes if they're reasonably in length?
I'm not ex, Karen, I'm, I'm not exactly sure, that's why I'm calling Karen's name.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, so, I think, like, when we, so, for example, because I did it, but the non-conformity was one section, and then there were changes to that. I, I think, we can't just say a bunch of zoning changes, I think it has to be very specific in terms of numbering and whatnot, so you, I don't believe that you'll be able to group them all, a bunch of things together, is that correct, Karen?
Um, it, it kind of depends, it, it might get too, too long and too complicated. Um, but we can take a look at where the changes are and see how we can do it.
But if we specify.
This is all about character, the, 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 the challenge is to make sure you have all the numbers like you were talking about.
Right.
The, the old number and the new number and the, throughout the whole thing, and that's, you know, it's probably going to be a very long legal notice. But it's not to say we can't.
So the legal note has to. Uh, sorry, let me, so the legal notice has to include all of the things that are being looked at, so the entire thing gets printed, is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, so that's why you want to make sure that it's, that it's a, a, an amount of, of change that's doable, so we don't, um, take out and add the size of the voices.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's a good way to say it.
Yeah, not only that, but you want to be based on the time requirements, you want to be sure that you can accomplish everything in one night.
Right.
That, that too.
Yeah.
All of the above.
Yeah, this is Candy, okay, so right now what we have is, I guess we have, um, modifications, changes, updates to section one, and then the definition of character, okay?
Yeah.
So can we bring this to a public hearing now, or do we have to, or should we wait?
Well, it would, it wouldn't be next month, because that's going to be involved, so it would have to be, yeah, so.
The problem Candy is, you would have to list throughout the regulations where this definition of character would be inserted, and that's going to take some work.
Yeah.
But would that matter if we just use character in the definitions and then that, that.
Oh, if this is going into the definition section, is that where?
Gail suggested.
Yeah, alright, well, that's a totally different. That's totally different, then that's one insert and that's not that big a deal.
Yeah.
Right, right, just one insert, just in.
But I think because people have just been introduced to it this afternoon, it's probably a bit premature to try and write this tonight.
Yep.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, so I was thinking maybe April is, is, uh, Kim indicated, because next month it's going to be overwhelming, there's going to be a lot to do.
Yep.
Yeah, next month, it's, it's too busy.
Well, we could, if we take a look at this and just kind of, you know, between all of us, just take another look when we have a little more time and just make sure it's written just the way we want, then at the next meeting, you know, during their regular meeting after the public hearing's over, we could schedule a public hearing for this.
That would work for April then, yep.
That work, yeah, okay.
Look at it at the March meeting again and then schedule it for April.
Yeah, and then, like Candy said, we could do that for section one, Gail would have to take a look at it again, just to make sure it's, it's correct, but that would be a done, kind of, one and done.
Yep.
Section, so maybe.
I agree.
You, okay.
And then Kim, we're going to keep, um, Agenda Item Six with the parking spaces for next month, for March?
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing?
Yep, that, I would suggest that before the woods, just because it'll be fast.
Okay. And there, and we have a deadline, don't we, do we not, on that, any opt-outs, we have a deadline?
Right, so we want to get that done, because then, after that, public hearing, and then we do our voting on it, then it has to go to the Board of Selectmen. It's not done until it goes, you know. So that's a whole, another month, we just want to make sure we can get that done before.
But we don't.
I can just, can I just make one comment about the, the regulation changes? It's a minimum of a two-month process, because everything we propose to change has to go to the planning commission as a referral.
Okay. Oh, so, um, it may not be till May, that's what you're saying?
Uh, right.
Okay, which is fine, it's not a rush.
And, and it also has to go out to all the other planning agencies, so it's a big, it's a lot of notifications that have to happen, that's why it becomes a two-month process.
Yep, okay. Yeah, and section one isn't ready for us to do that for tonight, to send it up, you know.
No, we're not, we're not nearly ready for that, so.
No.
That's rushing us.
Yep.
Yep, we don't need to rush.
No.
May, may public hearing is fine.
Yeah.
Alright. So, uh, we don't have to, the next agenda item is number eight, review of zoning regulations six, seven, and eighteen for consistency. We don't need to discuss that, because we've already done it.
Well, if I may, the, um, the, uh, so Julie has another document um, that has five, six, seven. Five, whoops, five, six, seven, six, ten, eighteen, right, oh yeah, here we go. Um, this was that email of Gail's that I pulled apart and did the separate documents. So this, again, not to have to go over this tonight, like Bill said, but it's here for review and this, I think. Bill, did you say that this is what you and Candy were going to start with?
Well, I would think this would be some redundancy here, because Candy and I would be. Well, I would think this would be some redundancy here because Candy and I would be looking at this regulation.
Yeah, this is not rewritten by Gail. These are just notes from Gail about this. So something that you guys would do, we'd still have to talk about it and go over it.
But this is what we'd come up with, hopefully.
Or other things.
Yeah.
Yeah. But these are notes. And so in order to have it in as a regulation, it has to be written and to go over the um you know, with the specific numbers by each thing. So she, this is a, this is like a working document that you could use.
I guess we'd have to maybe start with this Candy and read through this and see how it overlays onto the regulations. Or we read the regulations and then read this.
But she went, Gail went through it and so she pulled out things that she saw. And so I think it's a really, I think it'd be a really great starting point because she's done some of the, some of the research work already.
That certainly is uh, that's great.
Yeah. So that's what I got.
So we can't get into that tonight.
No, no, it's just, I just want people to be aware of what was in that um that other document. You know, it's light reading, right? You know.
Yeah, oh, sure. Along with graphs and charts, it's light reading.
There's no rush. Oh, what does that say? What do you do? Public Act? Oh, yeah, I've got that. Yeah. I read that whole thing.
This is light reading.
I tried, I read that a few times and a lot of it I don't, still don't understand.
Well, this is certainly a basis to start out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I figured that I could use, you know, the Public Act, our regulations, side by side, take a look at them, see, you know, it it it's it's going to be a very labor intensive um project, but
You you can still opt out, Candy.
Yeah, if if at the next meeting I have no hair.
Or if it's my color.
A funny group.
So do we need to discuss agenda item number eight anymore?
No.
We will, we will cover it. All right, so let's go on to number nine.
I love the big map. I'm so happy. This thing.
It's very colorful.
It's so much easier to see.
I gotta, I gotta tell you something. Uh for the uh for the chairman's report, I was going to announce something really nice and exciting, but I got shot down. So what it was going to be was I was going to try and have our next meeting be around a big table. So we get the 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 man, the last mandate are gone in the town hall. And there's really, I think a good reason to consider meeting the old fashioned way. But we can't because the technology needed to satisfy the legalities of our old fashioned type meeting are videos and record audios. And that's not ready yet. And I'm going to have to talk to Jimmy, but I would like, let me just ask, would everyone be interested in going back to the old meetings?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a lot of yeses. So I can try and be diplomatic and keep the heat on and try and uh try and get some Chromebooks for us. And Jimmy has a lot, a lot of work to do. He's got a lot of, he does a lot of, he has a lot of hats that he wears. And one of them is organizing whatever the programs are to video and audio our meetings. Because Jim, is that a legal requirement now?
Yeah, it's you have, they have to be hybrid. People have to be allowed to come in through Zoom or be in person. Have both.
We're having a legal meeting tonight because after the record, after the minutes are posted, I can go on a couple days now and see what we're saying right now.
Yeah. Yes, yep, yeah.
So uh, so this is a legal meeting, but it's not legal because we don't have the thing set up to.
Well, it is legal. It it is legal because everyone can can attend.
This one.
Yes.
But once we get to the table, we're not zooming anymore.
We will have to.
We'll have.
Make it available, yes.
Yeah, so it has to be both.
It has to be.
Yes, but once we get that available, once we get that system program wherever is available, everyone would be excited to go back to the real meeting.
Yep.
Good, all right. So let's let's uh move uh just to talk for a moment on regulations pertaining to zone A. I'll just touch on a few things because it really, we really need to have a big map in front of us to go over it and understand it. Big map in front of us, all of us, and I think to be efficient. Because right now we're just kind of, we have blinders, partial blinders on. So I wanted to say that this um zone A, addressing zone A came from the P O C D we had a few years ago. And the P O C D summary uh goal two in the P O C D summary uh suggestions, and there were generous a lot of suggestions. The most popular suggestion was allow smaller lot sizes to diversify housing types. Allow lower minimum lot size with smaller homes, uh the smaller homes on them. And it also wanted to encourage the development of small houses centrally located. And they discussed rezone zone A. So this isn't something we just pulled out of the air. This was something that came about and was reinforced by the P O C D that went on for a year. So at some point, I just took it upon myself that it was interesting to, I visited every a couple hundred lots. And I stood in every lot and Jimmy made, I guess you can't see, he made a list of every lot, acreage, who owned it, how many acres. And I used this along with a map that I color coded and made notes. And I honestly would have to research what my color coding meant. But some things meant a lot, a big piece of land, some land too small, some with geological problems, uh some rocks, some water, some wetlands. So that's how I made that map. And when in one of our groups in the P O C D, we would have these splinter things that went out for about twenty minutes. Groups of us would go uh out and have a little private meetings and come up with a summary of what we thought. And in the group I was in, they mentioned residential Roxbury as a zone A is presently defined by a three quarter mile radius circle that without reason regularly randomly and hapasally crosses many property lines thus making implementation of its purpose cost prohibitive ineffably and practically impossible. Reded from the zone A needed to make, to make, needed to make practical feasible and possible the bases of its original purpose, included in which is the preservation of its historic character. Creation of a country hamlet concept to allow for smaller, less expensive lots and therefore less expensive single family homes inviting younger families into our community who naturally want their own yards. This should not detract from the rural character of Roxbury, should even complement it as is a normal and typical part of countless rural New England towns and villages. So this was what fueled the fire to continue to be interested in zone A. And this is why, this is why it's still on our agendas. Um if, and we have I've talked to many people and including other commission members, other commission, not our commission members, and everyone seems to be in favor of looking into this. And it doesn't mean that zone A is going to be rezoned. Nothing's going to happen with zone A. It's going to just stay uh no one loses any classification. Some are currently abutting in zone C will become zone A. But uh just because you're in zone A doesn't mean you have to do anything and build three houses on a piece of land. It's just uh it's just allowing the opportunity should affordable housing or something needs to happen in an area of town that's not zone C, which is rural. Uh so that's why we're continuing to look into this. And I think that's why if we just think about the things I said just now, if we could keep those things in mind and flop the map out and see what I hypothetically did uh to keep zone A in the circle, but define it with meets and bounds that uh we should continue this if you think it's worthy of continuing.
So the the paragraph you read was something that your your group came up with during the P O C D.
Yeah, in our little secret meeting, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, not secret, but you know, all your separate, the separate meeting. So I think the thing to, for everyone to realize is that majority of towns don't have a circle. Because that's, it's antiquated and difficult to measure and that they go by, like Bill said, meets and bounds, something that's concrete that they can actually measure from. And I think for that purpose alone, I'd be in favor of of getting rid of the circle and and trying to create something that's going to be more easily measurable, you know.
Yeah.
Going forward. Because I think towns, I believe there's still a couple of towns that still use a circle, but I think it's a very, very small number that they've all gone to this.
And it was just a arbitrary, I center of the circle is just arbitrary.
Well, it's it's the monument.
With the monument, it's just where they build a monument.
I know.
Yeah, there are natural things. There's rivers, there's uh rock formations, there's lakes and streams and
Roads, yeah.
If we can sit around and flop my really big map out, I have a couple of bigger ones. Flop that on the table, we could touch every single lot in zone A and talk about each lot, whether that should be included or not. Uh so not, not that I, you know, not, we can table this for tonight. Remember and pick up somewhere when we can actually efficiently look at the map. And that will, go ahead, Kim.
No, go ahead. I don't want to interrupt.
No, that would be really when we don't have to deal with this with a Zoom meeting. We we have pictures worth a thousand words and you have your big map, but it's so hard you can't, you know, how can you put a map, it's a small map. You can't really use these big things that we can visualize uh on the T on the computer here.
There's a ver- a few very busy items on on the on the overall agenda in the next few months. And I think this thing needs to be addressed in when you don't have a whole lot of when you have the time to address it as the feature item rather than.
Well, that's right, Alan. And I think it'll probably fall into place when we get into the, out of these Zoom meetings to a real meeting.
Yeah.
It might work hand in hand. We can you know, certainly refresh ourselves and uh pick this up and carry on when that happens.
I think that'd be good.
It's frustrating right now.
I have a question, please. Does this represent um an increase in the number of lots?
No, not at all, nothing.
Nothing, okay.
Oh, nothing. Unless we extend zone A a little bit to the abutting, if it's just more logical, if there's only three hundred feet on the end of Hemlock Road, and we include a couple other zone C lots, then it would include a couple more lots, but it will change nothing, absolutely nothing. No, no change of lots, period.
Okay, well, I'm asking because you said something about the encouragement building smaller lots. So does that make potential to subdivide what's there? Is that what your goal is?
Well, that would have to, I just read what the uh summary of results of the P O C D were. This just, this is what just kept the fire the fans.
Thank you.
And and if it did, you know, for instance, you're, let's say you had, you're on the corner, I don't know how much land you have, but say, say you had five acres and we, and the zone changed to, well, it's not changing, we're not changing the zone. But hypothetically, if it did change and you could have three lots on your one lot, there's no one that holds the gun to your head that says you have to do it, nothing at all. So uh but that's not what this is about. This is just about redefining the zone of meets and bounds, which is modernizing it, make it, making it more definable and removing us out of the the abnormal way to define land.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I think at the last meeting, Chris brought up the um, when you, I think you looked up how um it was decided which uh zone it was going to be in, you know, for deciding what was going to be, if it was going to be looked at as zone C or zone A.
Yeah, the more restrictive prevails.
All right.
I just did a quick count and I think there's forty one lots that get crossed by the uh by the zones. They're in two zones.
And that's a lot. That that's quite a few.
Yeah, and some of them are quite large.
Yeah. So I think that that makes a big difference in terms of, I mean, because Bill, I think your map makes zone A a lot larger than it is. Because you've, anything that touched zone A, you put it into zone A.
Anything that touched zone.
It is a little bit larger.
Anything that touches on seed became zone A.
Anything that was in, I'm sorry, anything, any property, I think this is the way you did it. Anything that um was already touching in any way in zone A, you put it in zone A, all of the property. Is that correct?
All of them. Some are green and some are gray.
Oh, some are gray, okay.
And I'm sitting here embarrassed because I can't remember what gray and what my color code meant. But on my, on my big map.
Oh, I see.
It's noted.
I see, I got it.
I I'd like to know the total acreage of of zone A. And then the revi- this revision, how much would it increase? I I don't think it increases five, six percent, maybe.
Probably not, Alan, but it does increase the size, but not the number of lots.
Yeah.
It just makes some lots bigger.
Size increase is not that significant. It's only a little bit here, a little bit there. The the basic circle, the area within it is only getting enlarged by four or five percent, I I would guess.
No, I think that's probably realistic.
But some of the question will be raised and uh you've got to have an answer for you know, somebody say you're making it, you're doubling zone A and that's not true.
Yeah, oh, there's a lot of answers that are there. There there, all the answers are there. It just makes sense.
So I I agree with you, I agree with you about looking at this in person. We can, I can bring my highlighters.
Yeah, but I mean, I'll bring the big map.
Yeah.
Even bigger one. I mean, it's just, it's much more friendly to do. So because there's no urgency, nothing breathing down our necks. We'll just order my, well, this will be scheduled once we get into real fashion meetings.
Good. Excuse me, like the example of Maple Bank, I'm looking at Maple Bank. The majority of it's green. It appears a part of it's gray. Is that correct?
You got embarrassed to say Jimmy put gray in it. When Jimmy took my colored map, he added gray. I didn't have gray in mind, but I'll do the Yeah, I'm embarrassed to say Jimmy put gray in it. When Jimmy took my colored map, he added gray. I didn't have gray in mind, but I'll do the research.
Okay.
So, um, maybe that's, maybe those lots are in the gray area.
Oh, now we're in trouble.
Yeah, that's a bad joke, that's a bad.
Bad joke.
Alright, so let's, do we table this or put it off? Well, I, I think it's, I think it's very interesting. I think it's, it's really worthwhile spending some time doing this, it'll be fun to do this. Like I say, something like this is a lot better than writing a regulation for external lighting or treehouses or something like that. This, this could, this could be fun. Alright, so I won't forget this, and we'll put this on the. Head of all this when we get to, to the big table, back to the big table. Right?
I just think it's fascinating, I, I just wanna say, this is trivia, but my original deed includes. Jack's Brook. And look at where I am now. So if you don't think a map can change, it's changed.
Yeah. Alright. I made a deal with John Cody. To move the Z E O report up. So he doesn't have to sit through the whole meeting if he doesn't want to. I failed, I failed tonight, but Karen.
Thank goodness he's still with us.
I know, I saw him yawning a lot.
I see him there.
So Karen, what we'll do in the future, when we make the agendas, we'll just put it in a, uh. Uh, earlier spot, so he can do his Z E O report and not have to sit through a whole meeting if he doesn't want to.
Oh, John Cody, Bill, uh, I don't mind, it, it's entertaining, it's great to be informed. Um, alright, so I guess I'll jump off with my Z E O report. Uh, let me start off with, a couple of weeks ago, I was driving and I noticed one of Fran's trucks. And he had a bunch of household waste in it. He pulled into a house, grabbed some more, sparked my interest. I went into the tennis court area, from that vantage point, I was able to take pictures of a large container. Holding a lot of household waste. Um, as we all know, he's in violation of state statutes through the courts, through our regs, everything, he's not allowed to do any of that. Uh, so I issued an N O V for that, I notified the state. Probably two weeks ago, waiting for a response from them, their remark was received. So that's our update with Fran. Uh, a couple other N O Vs that. One other N O V that does have a little thing to touch base with us. A house or a lot on sixty-seven going towards Southbury. They were constructing a barn with no permits through wet, and issued an O V. Uh, no permits, ready structures whatsoever, um, that's being handled, went through a wetland, they came back, they made the applications for that. So I don't see any problems with that in the future, but that is also gonna be a new house that we're going to be getting. They just messed up their application procedure, they're coming along fine. Um, with the wetlands, we also have two new houses that are going for wetland site visits this month. So we have two new houses coming to our desk, um, shortly thereafter in a couple of weeks. There's also probably two more houses that have already been through wetlands. We haven't gotten the application yet, but it's in the works. Um, yeah, so i- i- if for February, that's bizarre. This is usually like Karen, I always say, it's. The worms come out in the spring, but the worms are out now, it's, it's pretty busy for February. Um, other things that I have. Um, they're not slow, uh, yeah, Candy, if you have any questions when you're researching that, regs and all that stuff, give me a buzz. I, I, I'll help you out any which way I can, I got them, I, you know, I know I'm pretty good. Um, I, I even have a lot of points I can show you where to look, what we wanna, what you wanna look at. Um, besides that, Karen O'Vaughn, it's unfortunately never slowed down this winter. It, it's weird, I think the spring. Is gonna continue. I had talked to several wheeltors, they're always calling, and they anticipate a March burst of housing once again.
Oh, wow.
I know, it, it's weird, I mean, our numbers are through the roof, Blaney's numbers are record highs. For, he's been there twenty-four years, he's never seen anything like this. I don't see it slowing down.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, it's interesting, to say the least.
I was told there's two houses that are for sale in Roxbury.
Uh, two, no, you know what? I don't know the actual numbers, I think it's a lot higher than that, but, um. No, have told me that the, the inventory in Roxbury is way down, way, way down, because everyone's buying everything. And when they buy them, they modify them, so that explains why we're so busy with the additions and. You know, more blaming with the kitchen renovations and stuff, but no, zoning is still booming. And generators.
Oh, yeah, right.
The generators and pools.
Well, thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you.
So, what do we have left? Chairman's report. Yes. Chairman's report. I told you what my chairman's report was gonna be, and I got shot down. I'd like very much to, I'll, I'll work on that, uh, but in the chairman's report, does anyone have any new items they'd like to bring up? We have enough.
We have enough.
Okay, good. Uh, communications newsletter, the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning. Always sends out some little pamphlets that Karen sends to us. Sometimes they have interesting tidbits in them. I don't think these had much interesting, but read them yourself, um, and, uh. That would be it as far as communications go. So that brings us to number, item number thirteen.
Do we hear cheering yet?
Hey, it's a full moon.
Once, once we act on that, it's forever hold your peace. Alright, so do I, uh, have a motion for adjournment?
That's Kim, I'll motion to adjourn.
Second, on the. Alan seconded, all in favor? I mean, so that's, uh, unanimous, our meeting's adjourned. And, uh, thanks a lot for all my, four, six, there are eight. As I'm looking at this screen, there are eight right arms, my right arms. And some of my left arm too, so. Forward to the next month.
Buddy, happy Valentine's Day.
To you and your family, I would like to offer my heartfelt condolences. I'm sorry, I'm not good at sending cards.
Oh, no, that, thank you very much, Elaine, and you're, you're, did we talk about when I asked you that question? Fantastic results, I got in touch with him and, um, fantastic.
Oh, good, good, I'm happy. Good. Better, better than if I answered you the way you expected.
Back, and it was like boom, 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 we're already in the books to get it done, so that was wonderful. Fancy, but a good relief.
Yep.
Good night, all.
Have a good night.
Happy chocolate.